Good evening, everyone. Rule call, Mr. Lombard?
Allam.
Yes.
Odie. Saxor.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Bell.
Yes.
All right, we have an agenda in front of us and it has been amended, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next, there are no conflict of interest, disclosure, or waiver requests tonight. That takes us to approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on December 12th. If there are no questions on that, I would entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please. Second, there's been a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Community input, we do not have any of that tonight, so that takes us next to our financial items, bills and claims. Mr. Lombard.
Total bills and claims submitted tonight's agenda, $1,482,382. Seventy-five percent of that total is two bills, one to Gil Haugen, $647,000, and one to U.S. Bank for $438,000. Fuel and utilities comprise a majority of the rest, otherwise reoccurring type bills, unless somebody had any questions. Pay vouchers totaled $50,000, I think, $50,437. And food service bills totaled $166,280.
If there are no questions on the bills and claims, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Next, the financial report.
Okay, the cash report for the month of December had $17.8 million coming into the month, $3,448,000 receipts, and $7.2 million of dispersments, left $14.1 million at the end of December, of which $8.4 million was in the general fund, $4 million in the capital outlay fund, $1.4 million in the special education fund, $180,000 in the bond redemption fund, and $15,000 in the enterprise fund. The $3,448,000 is itemized in detail on the new next two pages. Investment report follows that, just over $2 million. And then the payroll summary follows that, payroll of $2,466,000, back to a more normal month, as I've told you before, of about $2.5 million a month payroll in the Brandon Valley School District. The financial reports, we're halfway through the fiscal year now, so they start to become, in my opinion, more meaningful. The first two pages are the revenue reports. You can see general fund is at 43.2% versus 42.8% last year, so very similar. Capital outlay, 44% versus 37%, so revenues are on track to where they are anticipated to be. The expenditures follow that. The general fund, as you can see on the bottom, 49.95% year-to-date, with the year being 50% over. As I've always said, history is the greatest key to the future, so this would lead me to believe, last year being 51%, we were at 100% at the end of the year, so in that area of a half to 1% under maybe this year. So that'll help tremendously. Capital outlay fund, 50% expended for the year. Special education fund, 47%. Bond redemption, 83%. And the food service fund shows a net loss of $82,500, which is in line with the projected net loss of $260,000. We did one additional revenue item that we had in this year that will add to our bottom line, that'll reduce that $260,000, is the $90,000 in the top of the statement called supply chain funds, basically more COVID-type money that came in this year, so just under $91,000 there. So that'll help the 260, drop it down to maybe 160, so it's right in line with where we're projecting, way behind previous years with all the COVID money, obviously. Lastly, the trust and agency statement shows $235,000 amounts held for others. And on the bottom of that fund, I had noted that you'll see a Brandon Valley self-insurance fund. That's where the school district self-funds half the deductible and co-insurance for the Brandon Valley employees, in that we started out the year at $225,000, so it's just almost right on half gone for the year, so that's right in line with what we're projecting. That's all I had.
Any questions tonight for Mr. Lombard on the financial reports? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lombard. General business items. First, we have administration reports, administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a few things to update you on here this evening. The academic calendar, that is in progress of development. You'll receive a report and a presentation here today with potential adoption at our next Board of Education meeting. Certainly appreciate all of the parties that play a key role in providing feedback on the development of the calendar. Navigator CO2 pipeline, I just want to connect on our application for party status, that was submitted and approved. I did attend by a live stream, a PUC meeting on January 5th, 2023. The majority of that meeting surrounded a different pipeline and conversation on a different pipeline than surrounding the navigator, so we continue to monitor and will certainly keep you informed of future information and dates that come available with that. Timeline for superintendent evaluation is laid out there for your respective review. The evaluation tool will be distributed in February to the Board of Education and proceed as follows. Budget process overview, I just want to connect on FY '24 budget process. Our five-year plans have been completed by administration, and then we work over the coming months in terms of budget forms being distributed, completed, and compiled. You'll receive a presentation of the five-year plan here later in February, and then we'll look to approve staffing positions and additional items in March, along with our preliminary capital outlay budget, which is presented and approved by you so that we can work through all of our large ticket items that require procurement, strategies to meet the required laws. So you'll get a preliminary budget presentation in May, and then you will hold a public hearing in July, potential action in July as well. Academic calendar, outlined for you the days off in terms of in-service, President's Day, parent-teacher conferences upcoming in March. Going to speak specifically to the '22-'23 academic calendar here a little later in the agenda, so don't want to spend a ton of time on that, but do want to let you know that we will be modifying and updating that here later in the agenda. March 31st, did want to just comment that on our March 31st in-service, we will be hosting a professional speaker, Hamish Brewer is the individual's name. That is at the work and request of our professional development committee. Our teachers that are on that committee have made said request, and what we're going to do is we are going to incorporate all of our classified staff within that training, as Hamish is a motivational speaker, an inspirational speaker, but we're going to tie that for our classified staff into a number of other trainings for them, so they'll have the opportunity to participate in a half-day training and in-service with us. It's critically important to involve them in terms of our professional growth and professional development plans, so our classified staff will be able to participate in that respective experience. Our certified staff will also see Hamish, but then they'll also participate in their collaborative learning communities and the CLC processes, which is driven by our teacher leaders and our teacher facilitators in the respective areas that they feel they need to work on collectively as collaborative communities. High school addition update, no changes in terms of that respective information, but did just want to provide a couple of images and comments. Area A, exterior masonry is in progress, so now if you drive by, they actually have moved the tent further to the north so you can get a little bit of a glimpse of the exterior masonry work and brick work of that respective building. Looks about like so, obviously needs to be washed up and cleaned up, but that's the exterior masonry work in progress. Interior concrete in Area A, all of that flat work is currently ongoing. It's another image there. They were pouring concrete when I took this picture, so that's what you're seeing there. I believe this is a science lab, again, in Area A. Area B, steel stud construction is in progress, that's continuing towards the north, so steel stud construction in Area B continues and is ongoing. And then in Area C, the structural steel is still in progress, so our structural steel in Area C is flying in via the use of the respective equipment. And obviously, you can see that Area C is the two-story portion of said addition, so now when you're out and you drive by and you look at it, you can get a real good idea of what that actual footprint will look like and feel like in terms of the addition to the high school. So they're actually in the process of flying some steel in with the big crane, so anyway, that is all I have at this point in time, would certainly entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional tonight? High school, Mr. Schlockaway?
There we go. First of all, winter activities at the high school are in full swing, One-X kind of rolling, basketball, wrestling, it's everything right now, so it seems like we have an event every night since Mr. Frecking has been busy rescheduling and stuff like that, and he's assured me there's been no, there'll be no snow for the next four weeks, so I think we'll be good to go. Semester tests, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so I'll meet with all the freshmen and sophomores tomorrow just to kind of calm them down and walk them through the process again, especially our freshmen, but I think we're ready to go there. I appreciate the efforts of our students and our teachers with the couple of snow days we had, and we had to adjust some curriculum, so they did a great job with that. Second meeting of the month, you'll hear a lot from us because we are the good news report, so like I said, I wanted to keep it short, but I do want to invite the school board, it's hard to believe we're halfway through the year. So mid-year commencement is January 18th in the Performing Arts Center at 7:00 PM. Typically, I warn you in December, but I'm going to blame the snow, so you're getting warning tonight, but if you can make it, as board members, we would love to have you there. We'd meet in the commons at about 6:50, 10 minutes prior. If you can't make it, that's fine, you can let me know via email or after the meeting tonight, whether that'll work in your schedule, but January 18th, 10 mid-year grads, and then we will have seven participating in the ceremony, so look forward to that night, and those of you who have been there, that's kind of a fun night, a little more intimate than our big graduation, but any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Moore, Mr. Paula, I don't see. Middle school, Dr. Nelson, or Mr. Rothenberg, or anything tonight? Intermediate school, Mistress Gibson, Mr. Pearson? Okay. Special services, Mrs. O'Teague, anything tonight? Elementarys, any of you? No. All right, Mrs. Nelson, anything tonight?
I have some exciting information to share with you regarding our STEM component of our strategic plan, and that is that a couple of months ago, we submitted a grant application for a STEM grant to the Department of Ed, and we received word last week that we were approved for the grant, and it is a $200,000 grant. And so with that grant, we will be purchasing a set of robots for each elementary grade in every school in our district, including the fifth grade at the intermediate school. We'll also be purchasing a cart of iPads for each elementary school and the intermediate school, and then our teachers are going to have a chance to participate in a robotics boot camp this summer that's going to be led by our STEM integrationist, and teachers will be compensated for their time. So I want to thank Marie Gussi, who is our STEM integrationist, for her role in the grant, and the kids are going to be really excited when those robots show up in the school, I think. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Henshaw, anything tonight? Mr. Frecking, anything tonight? All right, that takes us to board policy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, under discussion as well as first reading, these are just amendments to respective policies that we have. These are a result of our accreditation process and some feedback we received from the Department of Ed. Very straightforward and simple change or tweak that I need added in terms of evaluation of professional staff, I need to add the line, "All Brandon Valley School District Administration shall be evaluated in accordance with South Dakota law and administrative rule," and that's the result of a three-year, every year, or four, you have to be evaluated in your first three years, and then it's every other year, and in terms of principalships, you're evaluated every year for four years. So again, this covers us and puts us into compliance in terms of what needs to be done. And then in terms of the anti-bowling and harassment respective policy, the one tweak or item that I have to have added is that in addition to the reporting procedure outlined within the policy, a person may anonymously report an act of bullying through the state of South Dakota's anonymous tip line, although formal disciplinary action may not be based solely on an anonymous report. So they felt like it needed to be more clearly outlined that an anonymous report could be submitted and how to do so, as opposed to, we in the policy state that it doesn't have to be in writing, but it could be, so anyway, this covers us in terms of an accreditation component. So those are the two tweaks to those respective policies, very simple, straightforward changes.
Thank you, and we'll adopt them the next?
I will, I'll bring those same two respective policies back for formal adoption and action at our next meeting in January.
All right, thank you very much. General business, the 2023-2024 proposed academic calendar, this presentation, no action.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, this is the draft calendar for the 23-24 school year, provided each of our Board of Education members a hard copy as well. See if I can... All right, so again, when I think about the key points of the calendar, I'd go, I would lean into consistent and corresponding with this respective calendar, the 22-23 calendar. So when we look at next August, you'll have new staff in-service scheduled for Tuesday, August 15th, and then in addition to that, we utilize those three split in-service workshop days, and those are scheduled for Thursday, August 17th, Monday, August 21st, Tuesday, August 22nd, and then school starts on Wednesday, August 23rd. So I would note that the split calendar, or the split in-service workshop days have been wildly popular with our respective staff and teachers in the feedback that we have received, the amount of work time that is garnered, so it's a good, it's a good mix of PD as well as work time for staff, and we've received positive feedback on that, so that's what it looks like in terms of August. Moving into September, there's no school on Monday, September 4th for Labor Day. When you look at October, you'll see our fall parent-teacher conference schedule, October 2nd, elementary and high school, the third is intermediate school and middle school, the regular days. The comp day is on Friday, October 6th, and then that plays directly into there being no school on Monday, October 9th for in-service, and that is also Native American Day. So that in terms of when we think about this from a family's perspective, their family would not have school on Friday or Monday, but our staff do have in-service on that respective Monday, so that's October. Looking into November, there's no school on Friday, November 10th in observance of Veterans Day, Thanksgiving break. We stay consistent with the Wednesday of Thanksgiving off, obviously Thursday and Friday as well, so that is the, that's the Thanksgiving break in November. Looking into December, winter break, two-hour early dismissal on Thursday, December 21st, and then winter break runs Friday, December 22nd through Tuesday, January 2nd, with school resuming on Wednesday, January 3rd. The reason that we have a draft two of the calendars is because draft one had our winter break moved a little earlier, so if you're glancing at your calendar, we were originally going to have a two-hour early dismissal on the 20th, which is a Wednesday, but then you would have to come back to school on January 2nd. Feedback received from the classified council, the certified council, and the administrative council, all were supportive of the two-hour early dismissal being on the 21st and giving us that January 2nd off with the third being the first day back from winter break, so that's where the draft two really comes into play. January 2024, school resumes on January 3rd. There is no school on Monday, January 15th, that serves as a workshop and in-service day. Always relevant to note that that is a contractual requirement, so within our master contract with the Brandon Valley Education Association, it's outlined that the day after semester one, it's a workshop day, so we actually have an agreement that allows us to split that into workshop and in-service, they've agreed to that, but you have to have some workshop time after semester one, and it just so happens that that also corresponds with Martin Luther King Jr. Day, so as we think about our families and do they have work, or do they have the holiday, those various things, so that's been feedback that we've received. Both Native American Day and Martin Luther King Jr. Day are great days for kids to be home because parents are sometimes home, so that's January 2024. February 2024, again, remain consistent with our approach to President's Day, Friday, February 16th, no school, and then Monday, February 19th, is President's Day, no school on that date as well. Looking into March, you'll see the spring parent-teacher conference schedule, Thursday, March 14th is a snow day, that's tagged with our comp day, which is Friday, March 15th, and then you can see that spring break or Easter is very early in 2024. We have a two-hour early dismissal on Thursday, March 28th, and then no school on Friday, March 29th, and then no school on April 1st, so that's the spring break schedule spills between March and April respectively, as outlined here as well. Friday, April 12th is scheduled for in-service. May 2024, the high school graduation, the commencement ceremony is scheduled for Sunday, May 12th. Last day for students would be scheduled for Thursday, May 23rd, and then obviously our staff will have their workshop day the following day on Friday, May 24th. Memorial Day is May 27th, just for your information. So notes in terms of consistent and corresponding, no school Wednesday of Thanksgiving week, two-hour early dismissal prior to both winter and spring break, in-service scheduled for staff and students on both Native American, or sorry, in-service scheduled for staff and no school for students on Native American Day and Martin Luther King Jr. Day. No school on the Friday of President's Day weekend, additional days necessary due to weather. We have one snow day built in and others get added in, so again, like this year, in terms of snow days, two are pretty easy, they fit pretty nice. Once you go beyond two, things get a little bit more, a little bit more challenging to work through, and we'll even talk a little bit about that here for this year, but that is the extent of what I have. I would certainly entertain any questions that you have. We'll again look to seek adoption at our next scheduled board meeting in January. Questions, thoughts, concerns?
Thank you, Superintendent Larson. Next, approve the 2022-2023 academic calendar modification.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Want to approve our academic calendar modification for this respective school year. Long story, very short, what we have is we have missed four days. This calendar modification specifically addresses two days, and I will explain to you why I'm not addressing the other two days quite yet. We will have school on March 16th, which was previously scheduled as a snow day, so that's right yonder, 4th, March 16th, we will be in session. The second day that we have added to the academic calendar is May 26th. That day was previously scheduled as staff workshop, now we extend that to the 26th, with staff workshop being Tuesday, May 30th. So this modification, I would like to get approved, and then I will also share with you some additional information about how we're going to proceed forward, and even try to look a little bit into the old, what about this, or what if this happens, because we have some families and some parents who have asked respective questions, so we're going to talk through that for just a minute. So again, academic calendar update, we've been closed four respective days, we've had three late starts. The current academic calendar item, we are not changing quarter two or semester one end dates, we left those as is. We're scheduled to be in session on our snow day, students will be in session on Friday, May 26th, workshop is scheduled for May 30th. There are two additional contract days that have been missed, and when we talk about contract days are the contractual obligation that our certified staff have with you as the school board. So there's two additional days that have been, workdays that have been missed that will be made up. Now, exactly how they are made up is where my crystal ball's broken, and the only way I could come to try and give you a sense of understanding is to use an if-then-but statement. So if we do not have another snow day, then the current updated calendar will be utilized, and the additional two teacher contract days will be made up via professional development and flexible curriculum development planning, okay? We have done that historically, when we've had an extra day, our certified staff, whether it's PD, it could be our CLCs, that flexible curriculum development planning time is a way that we have managed those additional workdays when that happens, okay? But in the event of an additional snow day occurring in the calendar, I will bring forward a modification that has students in session on Tuesday, May 30th, Wednesday, May 31st, Thursday, June 1st, and then teacher workshop will be held on Friday, June 2nd. And the reason that the three-day component comes into play is because in terms of high school scheduling and our high school principal just referenced semester tests, really works best when we have three respective days and an early dismissal with it will coordinate just fine. So with that being said, we will make every effort to not extend the student calendar beyond Thursday, June 1st. So if we miss one more day, you can see what it looks like. If we miss two more days, this is what it'll look like, and then I will probably utilize PD or flexible curriculum development planning with our certified staff to meet their contractual requirement following that June 2nd date. So that's really, really where it sits. I say that, and in the event that we miss five more days, then we might have to have a little different conversation about whether or not June 1st is, we're not going to extend school past that, but right now, this is where we're at. Want to utilize this calendar modification and then just allow everyone the opportunity to know the information, we'll send this if-then statement to our parents so they have an idea of where we're at if certain things happen, but would just ask for a little grace and a little time for us to get through the next couple of months, or few months, or I, you know, to figure out exactly where we're at once we get through the winter season. So with that, would certainly entertain any questions you have, but would ask for... So with that, would certainly entertain any questions you have, but would ask for approval on the calendar modification.
What do you want first, approval, or do you want discussion? Okay, my question is, with COVID and all that stuff, we went to viral, or viral, virtual learning. Okay, is there possibilities of not messing with this calendar that virtual could be used in the learning process for all grades, or no?
The short answer is no. That's not a recommendation that's going to come out of my superintendent's office. There's a tremendous number of reasons for that in terms of reasoning and rationale why we would not utilize those, that respective approach, but rather manage it the way that we have historically. So there's a lot of pros, obviously, and there are also a lot of cons associated with utilizing that respective approach, but that is not something that will come out of my office.
Remember, Odi, what you asked, I think has come up a lot, I think distance learning was not something we executed for a day here and a day there, and it wasn't something you could just turn on and off for various reasons, so that I think that is just something for the public to understand, the heavy lift that our staff did to put that together, and it's not just something that we can just throw out there, not for various reasons. Would it be a fair statement to say that, I know there's been questions about why do we not build in more snow days? You alluded to how difficult it is just to build in one or two, but it's, again, looking at a crystal ball, if we build in three, four, 10, that only elongates the calendar. Then if we don't use them all, sure, they have built-in days off, so we either build in one or two, and then if we don't use them, or if we need more, it's either a long calendar now, or a long calendar later, so it's just half dozen now, six later, do you know what I'm saying? Like, okay.
So what I would say is you could definitely build in some snow days. The Friday of President's Day weekend, the 17th, as opposed to that being a day off, that could be a snow day. Your staff is not going to be very happy about that type of snow day.
I do not recommend that.
In addition to that, you could build a snow day into your spring break that doesn't have a paid holiday. You know, there are a lot of places where you can put a snow day with a question mark on it, the problem is, is people make plans that don't have question marks, and unfortunately, parents and/or staff, if a snow day happens, they just, or parents or families, they just leave, but your staff, they don't get to just miss work that day, they have to utilize their respective leave, or take it unpaid, or whatnot, so again, you can build them in, but the likelihood of me being able to bring to you a calendar like I did previously that says this has the support and the approval of those respective committees, I don't think you would get that from the groups that are providing me with feedback, if that makes sense.
This is obviously, I'm sorry, the amount of snow and all these variables that are leading us to this, hasn't happened for 10-plus years. Now, are we going to have days that we are going to miss, you know, in the future? Yes. You know, the question that's been brought up was, snow days, is there any way that, to get more of those snow days built in? Do we start sooner instead of going longer? You know, it's one of those, one of those odds that, you know, what do we do? You know, there's only so many days in the calendar year right now, so do we move, start sooner, you know, that's...
So ladies and gentlemen of the board, as well as members of the community, I can tell you that after having created school calendars for whatever, I mean, how many years, I can tell you that as long as you can start late, get out early, and have a long Christmas break, everyone will be very happy. The reality of the situation is it is impossible to start late, get out early, and have a long Christmas break.
And no snow.
And then you, yeah, compound all of the other respective things with it. What I would say is that historically, and even this year, given the amount of snow we had and what we have missed, if we miss, like I said, if we miss one more day, you're looking at, you're looking at it being right after, right after the Memorial Day holiday. What we generally try and do is we generally try and have it scheduled so that we are all done prior to Memorial Day. That's really, as we look at building it, we don't want to go beyond that if we can help it when we're planning. Obviously, when you run into extenuating circumstances, that can occur, but again, you as the Board of Education control the academic calendar. It's been consistent in corresponding now for, I think, four years or so. I do know that our patrons that I receive feedback from really appreciate the consistencies associated with certain things, like for example, the Wednesday of Thanksgiving off, the Friday of President's Day off, because they know, I mean, they have a good idea it's coming, and they can plan accordingly, so again, we can build them in wherever you want to, it's just that your respective staff that are providing feedback may not be appreciative of said changes.
I would move to approve. There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. That takes us to general business items three through six, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
Some of.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Personnel items, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through eight as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Item for information only there, under number nine, under communications, central office, it looks like there are building permit applications from December of 2022 for your review if you choose to do so. Under the Board of Education, multiple thank you notes, it looks like that retired, like I said before, retired staff holiday luncheon is pretty well-received and pretty well-liked, so thank you very much, and I know that we appreciate and are happy to be able to put that on, so. That takes us to our formal board reports, does anyone have any formal board reports for tonight?
I don't have any reports, the transportation was moved to another day because of the weather, go figure, but I also just wanted to reach out and say thank you for the transportation, the bus drivers did an amazing job those last couple of weeks. Special thanks to the townships, Red Rock, Split Rock, Brandon, Valley Springs, City of Brandon, City of Valley Springs, Aaron Sayer did a great job with the parking lot, Jeremy Scadden, myself, everybody that's been out plowing roads, making these no-school days very far and few, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any board reports tonight? All right, with that, we do need to go into executive session tonight, so I would entertain a motion to go into exec, or move to go into executive session to discuss South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2.1 and 1-25-2.4 for employee qualification slash negotiations.
So moved.
All right. We're out of executive session at 7:21 PM, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, and thank you for coming.